So, good evening, everyone. This is the opportunity, once a year, that I get to open up the school board meetings. So, I'd like to first start by welcoming our new board members. Christina Macklin, who is returning. She was new for a couple of months last year and has now been voted in as a Virginian Union High School representative from Ferrisburg. So, welcome Christina.
Thank you.
And we also have Tom Boerschert from Waltham. And Tom was also voted in as a Virginian Union High School representative at town meeting day. So, welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments to make?
I, no. Good evening.
Great. All right. So, the first order of business is election of officers. I will entertain a motion for the chair position.
I nominate Lori Childress.
Second.
That was a race.
That's right.
Glory, did you get that?
I got the nomination, but you still need a motion before you can have a second.
Oh. So, we have to have a nomination. No seconds until it's actually voted.
You make the nominations and then afterwards you make the motion of who you want.
Okay. Are there, oh, sorry. You. So, let, thank you, Lori. You are well-suited to be the next chair.
See, she's jumping right in.
So, we're hearing a nomination from George to, for Lori Childress to be the chair. Do I have any other nominations at this point? Hearing no other nominations. All those in favor?
No, now you need a motion.
No, wait a second. They think, they will make a motion after they vote for the position.
You need someone to make a motion to have Lori as chair.
But they have to vote first and then they make a motion for her to become chair.
Okay.
No?
I only vote once.
Yeah. You vote once. So, George would, say, George would make the motion to have the recorder, cast one ballot.
Cast one ballot.
Right. I so move.
You write that down.
I already have it in my things.
I knew that.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Lori. I am happy to hand the meeting over to you at this point.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So, we have a vice chair to nominate. Do I have any nominations for a vice chair? I nominate Christina.
I was gonna nominate George.
Well, you can have two.
Does that mean you have a nomination?
I don't know.
Will you accept the nomination?
Yes, I don't really know what it entails, though.
Well, in my absence, essentially.
Oh, Lord.
I'll try not to be absent too much.
Okay. I really, okay.
Hey, I, yeah. You can do it. If I could do it, you can do it.
Neil was the vice chair last year. I think he ran one meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll accept the nomination. Thank you. Did you want to nominate George?
No, I guess I won't, unless George really wants to do it.
No, no, I have other aspirations.
All right.
So, I'll entertain a motion to cast one ballot for vice chair.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Thank you.
You can't move. You already, you can't second. You've already moved. Got it.
I seconded.
Thank you.
Wow.
We're gonna get this.
We are. We are gonna get this.
We're gonna get some Robert's Rules training.
I needed that book, is what I needed.
That's right. I never had to get my Robert's Rules. Um, I, we need to nominate a clerk. Is there any nominations for clerk?
What are the responsibilities of?
Uh, so, you are responsible for, or the clerk is responsible for taking any minutes in the absence of Glory, which is never. Except, you, um, you do have some executive sessions and then you need to notate what time we.
You keep saying "you."
Right. Absolutely right. I did, didn't I, Tom?
And I'd like to move this along by nominating Tom to be the clerk.
Tom. All right. Um, yes. Okay? You'll accept the nomination? Thank you, Tom. Are there any other nominations? Nominations?
Gotta have a second.
No, not the nomination.
Not yet.
It's the motion.
The motion, right. So, seeing there are no other nominations, I'll accept a motion, I'll entertain a motion to cast one ballot for clerk for Tom Boerschert?
Boerschert.
Boerschert.
So moved.
So moved. Okay, second.
Aye.
Say, aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Thank you. All right. Addison Northwest Supervisor Union Delegates. My understanding is the high school board chair is a delegate and then we need two others. Does that sound right?
Right.
So, I will accept nominations for the delegates. I nominate George.
Oh, I was gonna do that.
And we need one more.
Is Steve Flynn doing it?
Steve Flynn is on the Virginian Union Elementary School Board.
So, this is for the supervisor?
This is for the ANW.
But they haven't been appointed. There's seven. We're missing two.
Richard.
No, 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 I understand, but my, he's, I wanna make sure Waltham is represented, that's why. So, if Steve's already on it.
I don't know.
We don't know yet. He'll be.
Oh, you don't know? That'll be, that'll be.
He would be because they have to have one representative from each town.
So, he would have to.
V U E S has to have one from each town.
Yeah. Waltham, yeah. Waltham has to have.
There's nothing.
I'm willing to do it.
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna nominate Chris?
Yeah, I was gonna nominate Chris.
There we go.
I nominate Chris.
So, we have two nominations. I will entertain a motion to ask the clerk to cast one ballot for George Gardner and Tom. I'm not gonna get your last name. I'm sorry.
Boerschert.
C H A R D.
Why, B R T. But wasn't Chris the?
It's Chris. Chris, I'm sorry.
Chris was the one that was.
I'm sorry, Chris.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. It's been a long time since I ran a meeting, seriously.
Well, yeah, all of a sudden.
Forgive me. So, we have a motion to nominate Chris and.
I don't have a motion yet.
George.
No one's made the motion yet.
So, I'd like to entertain a motion. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please forgive me for the messiness. Date and time and location for regular meetings. You had said that you wanted to.
May I make a recommendation, please? So, as you know, the role of this board is going to change. When the unified board starts to meet and that change will be mostly accelerated after July 1st, even though the newborn board will be forming, they will be accelerating on their responsibilities and you will be taking your foot off the gas, so to speak. So, I would like to suggest that we keep our date, time of the regular meetings through June and then allow the superintendent to work on a schedule that I will present to all boards sometime in the next couple of months. Just trying to think about how to organize all of this because it's not just board meetings. We will be starting negotiations, both with support staff and with teachers, and I just need to make sure that all of the bodies of work in front of us have enough time to get done. So, it would, the motion would be to maintain the current second Monday of the month at the six o'clock time period to be held at the Virginian Union High School Library until June 30th of 2016.
I'm entertaining a motion.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Newspaper, newspaper of record. We generally do the Addison Independent. Is there any reason to change it? We need a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we designate the Addison Independent as the newspaper of record.
Second.
Under discussion?
And any discussion?
I, I feel that there are some people that do not get the Independent. And thusly, although it is the local paper, it does not reach the whole of our constituency. And I would ask, if you have a figure off the top of your head, what it costs us for the announcements that we are required to make there?
Glory, do you have that? Is there a budget line item?
I don't know how much the.
Yeah, there's gotta be a budget line item for legal announcements.
Um, I think it's right around 11, $10 or $11 a month for the Addison.
Okay.
For the legal notices.
That's all it costs us to put those in there?
Yeah.
Well, I would.
They're very small.
I would then like to amend the motion to include that we put them in the free press.
That's gonna be a lot more expensive.
A lot more expensive.
Do we really think free press?
Yeah.
Do we think the more people get the free press?
I do. I get the, I get the Independent.
Yeah.
But what I read is the free press. Sometimes the Independent is well behind the eight ball as far as reading it, where the free press, I read all the time.
So, I just had to post an RFP legal notice for, in the Burlington Free Press and it's $125 a day.
It's so much a line.
Okay. So, it would be quite an increase.
Yes.
They're huge.
Okay. Question answered.
I mean, maybe we can find out what the circulation number is at the Independent. I'm just curious. I mean, we could find that out easy enough.
We could probably also find out what the free press circulation is in this area, which would tell us.
I mean, I personally do not read the Burlington Free Press, but.
I know, there's a lot of people.
We get those at the house, but.
So, for your purposes tonight, you can make a motion and vote for the newspaper of record and if you would like administration to do a little bit more research on circulation, that can come back again.
I, I would appreciate that if you're willing to do that.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed, thank you. Committee assignments. So, we have two committees.
You actually have three. Three, if you, if you think of the Hannaford Center as a committee, that's a representative. So, it's not exactly a committee, but you, you do need, you do need a, an assignment for one of the board members to attend to that meeting.
Okay. Well, why don't we start with that one?
I would, I would nominate Richard to do that. He's been doing it. He appears to have a handle on it. He's only had it for a year. I think that it would be inappropriate to remove him just because he isn't here. If he doesn't want that, when he shows up the next time, he can say so.
Right. Okay, so I have a nomination for Richard for the Hannaford Career Center?
I'll second.
Okay. So, are we casting one ballot still, Glory? I don't think you have to with the committees. You can just do motions. Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a motion on the floor to?
I made a motion.
Yes. And a second is Christina. And any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed, thank you. And then we have two committees. We have Facilities Committee and we have a Finance Committee. Tom, Finance Committee. Jeff said you might be interested.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Facilities is what I meant to say.
I'm happy to.
Contribute.
Contribute.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
Is anyone else interested in the Facilities Committee? I know Richard was on it, isn't that right? Was Richard?
Was.
Richard was on it, yes. But I don't think he was able to attend.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Do you know when the meetings are?
The meetings are in the morning, right?
They've been meeting the first Friday of every month at 7:30 here. But that.
So, I could probably do it. I have to teach at 9:30 in Burlington, so I could be here.
For an hour?
For an hour.
So, we're.
Three.
Weren't there three members on the?
There were three. Richard, Jeff, and Kurt.
And Kurt is obviously gone.
Right. And we do have two people missing, Richard, and we have a Pantan representative that hasn't not been appointed.
No, for Jen's.
Oh, for Jen's representative that's not been appointed yet, thank you.
I'm really interested in that committee. However, I have bigger fish to fry. So, can we leave just the one appointment for the time being and when the other members are present, we can fill that out? Does that?
How does that leave Stephanie?
That definitely works. You know, you can revisit your committee assignments month to month. So, I think that probably makes sense, George, for tonight.
Because later on in our agenda, we're going to revisit that committee, so.
The Finance Committee?
No.
No, the Facilities Committee.
So, is anybody else interested? Chris?
I can't make it at that time, so.
I could do it.
Are you interested?
Yeah.
Here's a minute for you.
I know a lot about the building, sort of.
Is there another agenda?
You're, you're up for heavy lifting tonight.
All right. Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to put Tom and Christina on the Facilities Committee.
I'll second that motion or I will make that motion. So move.
And I'll second him.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Stephanie, when was that meeting again?
We meet, well, we've been meeting the first Friday of every month at 7:30.
April 1st is less than an hour, Tom.
It's less than an hour.
Is April 1st the first Friday?
April Fool Day.
It is. Giving a quiz, it's fine.
So, the Finance Committee is currently made, was currently made up of.
All right, excuse me. I'm sorry, before you move on from that, can we talk about other members of the Facility Committee? I just wanted to remind folks that Jeff Glassberg is interested as a community member now in staying on.
Right.
That committee, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's what he was talking about, I think.
I thought we were gonna address that under five E.
Uh, well, we're gonna need a motion, aren't we, to change the, the makeup of the committee?
If you want.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have a motion.
A motion from us.
We have a motion that, that changed the makeup of the committee.
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did that at our last meeting.
Yes, we did. So, we'd need two.
Staff.
Staff or.
And two, and two students was what was proposed.
Two community members and two.
Staff.
Staff.
Students.
Staff or students.
Okay.
We left it open, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yes, it's two community members and two school community members. Teachers, staff, students.
So, it would seem to me that it would be up to Stephanie to propose the school members?
Well, I'd have to send that out to my faculty and see who's interested.
I wasn't anticipating you were gonna do that tonight.
You're right.
I think, I think that, that it would be inappropriate for us to make that sort of a decision without your input.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So, you'll get back to us at the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
And is Joanne going to do something about the community members?
I can certainly put something out for community members that might be interested.
Okay.
And if you would prefer to do that before we discuss who will be on it from the community, that's fine.
I, I don't, we have one volunteer and I see no reason not to accept his volunteering.
Okay.
Because he's, I mean, that would only be good for the kids.
Sure. So, we will put a notice in the paper that other interested community members can write a letter of interest to the superintendent. I'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
There's one.
Thank you.
One person?
Two community members, two students.
Right. But Jeff is already.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Is gonna take one of them, yes.
Right. So, it would just be one, Joanne. Thank you. Do we need a motion to get Jeff on? No.
No, I think.
I don't think so.
I think we, we had made the provision in the last meeting and all we're doing now is we're going to make a motion to appoint him. So, I will so move.
Okay. Last second?
Sure.
Tom, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So, Stephanie, you'll get back to us next month about the possibility of two, if anybody's interested, and Joanne will make an announcement in the Addy India, I assume.
Now, can I just clarify that? The committee includes Bob Worley. So, we're talking about two other.
Oh, so we already have him.
Are you talking?
And you.
I guess, clarify, oh, yeah, I'm not a faculty, but would that mean two other?
Well, we, we said school community then. I don't think that was specific in that motion. My understanding was.
The, the.
Yes.
So, it says, the motion says to expand the committee to include two community volunteers and two school community members. So, presumably, that would be two additional.
Yeah.
Teachers, staff, and students.
Yeah, it, it was to expand. It was to increase the size of the committee by four members. So, yes, I would say two more.
Up to four members.
We're gonna have to find a new meetings place.
Well, everybody could stand up. You said it's less than an hour. No, seriously, isn't that committee a moving committee? Don't you go and look at different things? I, not necessarily. Yes, okay. Just a thought.
Uh, so I think we can move on from the Facilities Committee. On to the Finance Committee. There, well, anyway, let's, right now, there's currently three members. George, I, and Chris. And I'm happy to do it again.
Oh, my.
We are gonna talk a little bit later about the need for it. I want the board to talk about that, but in the meantime, I think we should just adopt the members and then we can do whatever from there.
In anticipation of a fuller role elsewhere, I'm going to decline to continue on that.
All right. Well, hi, there's no board member numbers. We did not, when we did the Finance Committee, we, uh, hmm, I have that. On 9/8/14, a motion was made by Richard, seconded by George, to give the Finance Committee a partial charge of authorization to review the bills and present to the board at the meeting. The committee is to continue to come up with additional charges for the board to review at the next meeting. Jeff, and then Jeff went on to say something else. So, there's no numbers and I don't see any reason why we can't just leave it Chris and I for now. You're not interested, are you?
No.
And Tom, are you interested? Can I ask?
I have a steep learning curve here, so, so, I say, let's just keep it as is and this is something that can be revisited if, if it needs. I mean, these things are all gonna be changing, too, because this board is folding up shop, so.
Well, hopefully, yes.
Yes, hopefully.
Have you heard anything about a petition?
No, I have not.
Okay, I was gonna ask, but.
No, 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 that's, that's a fair thing to say.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Lori, I have a suggestion. If this, if this group remains two, it does not make sense to call it a committee because you're really not taking action.
Yes.
What you're doing is you're reviewing things so that you can recommend signing the orders to the rest of the board members. So, I would suggest that we leave it as just representatives of the board, it's not a committee. Because if Chris doesn't, if Chris can't come, you're not a quorum.
I, I, yeah.
Right?
I hear that.
And you wanna, you wanna continue with the work that, that is in front of you. So, I would say that you are not a committee. You are operating under the authorization of your board to do the pre-review of the orders so that you can recommend the consent agenda at the board meeting. So, you do not have to take action for that.
Do we need a motion?
Except we have this committee that is authorized to review the bills. So, we either have to defunct the committee.
Yep.
Or get a third.
Or get a third, right?
Right.
How often do you meet?
Once a month.
When?
3:30 on, before this meeting.
And I don't usually get there till work because I don't go to school.
It takes a.
I can't do, I can't meet then.
Well, we could assign a third. I mean, the, the, my issue is, I think the Finance Committee has served some purpose and I think it might, it's possible that it's at the end of its useful life. But I don't wanna make that decision and kill it before, so I'd, I'd like to, I don't know, Richard isn't here. Does anybody have a problem with me nominating Richard?
He won't make it.
I mean, we're, we're gonna have the same problem, though, aren't we? Because we're not gonna have a quorum.
But he's, but he's working two jobs.
Yeah.
He gets done at the hospital and he goes to Hannaford. So, I don't think that he would ever make a meeting.
Would you be willing to stay on the committee until we can figure this out?
Okay.
I appreciate that, George. All right. So, I'll entertain a motion to have Chris, Lori, and George on the Finance Committee.
So moved.
There we go.
Second.
Rock, paper, scissors. I guess I'll second then.
Is that a second?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Or any discussion?
I think we've already discussed it.
Yes, I think we did. And all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Can I abstain?
Yes. Would you like to abstain?
Yes, please.
Before we go any further, I want to add an executive session to the end of the agenda for purposes of superintendent evaluation. And we don't have to nominate, we don't have to say who we're inviting right now yet. Great. Public communication. Hi, Lynn. Hi, Nancy. Hi, Martha.
Hi.
Do we have? Hi.
I'm representing the Addison Northwest Teachers Association at this point in response to some of the cuts that are occurring and you got in your notice, I believe, per your notes.
Yes.
So, VUHS has failed to me annual yearly progress continuously. One way we could address this issue is to provide more remediation for our students. Interventionists could be hired to work with students. These professionals could work with all students, not just students on plans. We could provide writing and math labs each block for immediate support for any student. We could provide internal coaches who would be able to help their colleagues differentiate, create more tasks to meet the PBGRs and improve on pedagogical practices. The loss of teachers in math and English departments will increase class size, create more scheduling conflicts, and over time, reduce department course offerings. We should have more options for our students, not less. In the last few years, we have cut art, music, PE, and are on the verge of eliminating the French program as an elective. It will become more difficult to provide for personalized, personalized learning and PBGRs when students have fewer options for electives. Reductions in the professional staff in any capacity limits the classes we are now able to offer. It also limits the educational experience provided for VUHS community. And the positions, once they are cut, is what we fear will not be added back in as other interventionist coaches and to run math labs and the English labs. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Any other comments? Lynn? Yes, ma'am.
I'm here on behalf of the Commodore Parent Group and I just wanted to let everyone know that we're having our only fundraiser of the year coming up on April 2nd. It's an annual trinkets and treasures rummage sale happening here in the high school gym from 8 to 2. And we have drop-offs if you're looking to get rid of some of your valuables at home. We will be collecting your treasures each Saturday from 9 to 11 at Kennedy Brothers down the street. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Could you repeat the date? When that's happened?
When that's happening, April 2nd?
April 2nd, I'm on sale.
Can you sit here in the middle, spoken?
High school gym.
High school, yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other public comment, Martha? Okay, thank you. Educational presentation.
Yes, this is really exciting. We have Elise Boshman, who's with us this evening, and I don't know, Stephanie, you wanna say a couple of words about the or-
Oratorical.
Oratorical, thank you. Competition, thank you very much.
Well, I was planning to distribute a write-up, but I realized that no one was better able to explain what it is this competition is all about than Elise herself, so I know that she's prepared to do that much more eloquently than I could.
Nice. So, because we have cameras tonight, I've asked Elise to come up to the front of the board table. Come on up.
I'm actually gonna move. Hey, buddy?
Hi.
So, I compete in an oratorical competition with the American Legion, and it's not just one speech that I'm giving during that competition, it's actually two, and they're all prepared. The first one is a ten-minute speech on some aspect of the U.S. Constitution, and that's memorized without notes and without a microphone. And then, after I give that speech, I have four assigned topics, usually on an amendment, and one is pulled at random after I give my big speech, and I have to deliver that again with no notes, or a podium, or a microphone. So, I have a prepared oration, not the ten-minute one this time, it's actually a five-minute speech on the Eighth Amendment. The Eighth Amendment may have been created over 200 years ago, but it is still quite relevant to this day. Cruel and unusual punishment is something that Americans take very seriously. We have watch groups who monitor the conditions in prisons, the status of inmates, and demand a person accused of a crime is treated fairly in court and in their sentence. But what most Americans are starting to realize through our instantaneous access to information is that there are some parts of the world that do not even recognize the principle of cruel and unusual punishment. In 2008, a Saudi Arabian civil activist by the name of Raif Badai started an online blog to promote and support Islam. In 2012, he was arrested, and after several lengthy court trials over several years, he was sentenced to ten years in prison, 1,000 lashings in public, and a $250,000 fine. His wife, who was taken out of the country, has brought international attention to her husband's cause. She remarks that her husband was not a terrorist. He did not even carry a gun, he was simply armed with his pen and his passion to speak for his religion. She condemns the Saudi government and demands his release. When the rest of the world heard of Badai's punishment, we reacted in disgust and horror. It was the same type of treatment that plagued people in Europe for centuries. The founding fathers knew this, and for that reason, guarded us with the creation of the Eighth Amendment. But it is important to understand that the Eighth Amendment is not an entirely new American concept. In fact, the founding fathers borrowed the idea from a 1689 English Bill of Rights provision. But in this modern day and age, we debate the extent of cruel and unusual punishment through our Supreme Court cases. Cases such as Gregg versus Georgia in 1976, which ultimately determined if capital punishment was appropriate in even the most severe crimes. Ford versus Wayne White in 1986, which determined if the death penalty can be given to a citizen mentally ill. And Miller versus Alabama in 2012, which made the sentence of life imprisonment non-mandatory to be imposed upon a juvenile. As Americans, we must realize that we are very fortunate to be protected so well with our amendments. This amendment in particular has played a prominent role in history and will continue to do so. If the founding fathers never believed that there should be a limit to cruel and unusual punishment, how many good Americans would have been silenced throughout history for speaking their minds? Eleanor Roosevelt, Martin Luther King Jr., what could our country look like? If the U.S. Constitution is America's strength in times of unity and in times of strife, the Eighth Amendment is our strength to prevent strife in this modern age. Thank you. Very impressive. So, that's one of, one of my four smaller speeches, which I will, one will be picked at random in April when I go to Nationals to represent Vermont, so.
It's fabulous. Good for you, Elise. Congratulations.
It's really good.
Any questions for Elise?
I have a question. Cookie started to explain something to me about that you couldn't perform one of your speeches, because it was not, you were not allowed to perform it on video camera before the actual, is that your ten-minute speech?
Yeah, that's my ten-minute speech, and because they don't want any of the other contestants to listen or hear to it, because that's the only speech that is guaranteed that I will be giving at Nationals, while the Eighth Amendment, I may or may not be giving.
Okay. Could you also address, just so the board has an understanding, there's sort of another oratorical track too, that you also compete in, and then other students here do as well, right? You're doing the American Legion.
The American Legion Oratorical.
Orator, okay.
So, there's several different speech competitions that Ms. Step has provided for her students to participate in. I participate in the American Legion Oratorical, but there's also the Lions Speak Out Competition. There's also the Legion Auxiliary Americanism Speech Competition, there's also that, there are several, and I think they are listed on the handout that you all got, too.
And how many students at VUHS compete in various speech and oratorical competitions?
Usually, I would say around five or six, probably like five to eight. It changes throughout the years, but Ms. Step really wants to have more students come in next year and the year after.
And they start as young as seventh grade, correct?
Yes, yes. There's a lot of different opportunities, and it's pretty amazing, because I, I remember when I first started speech competitions, I was so afraid of speaking in public, and now I can give speeches without notes in front of a large group of people, so I am very fortunate for this opportunity.
Do they give you any lead time at all to tell you which one of those speeches you're gonna have to give?
Yes, thankfully, they do. So, for the, at least for the Vermont division, we are given five minutes after our main speech to prepare for our smaller speeches. In Vermont, or at the district level, before you go to Nationals, you actually get your speech with you to prepare, but at Nationals, they take your speech away after your big speech, so you just have to prepare in your memory for that five minutes. Any questions? Yes.
Can you give me an idea of how much preparation work it took to do that speech you just gave?
Probably, well, I've been working on all my speeches since April, because that's when the next assigned topics come out. So, I would say well over maybe 200 hours. It's a, it's a while. The first part is researching, and then there's writing, and then there's practicing and memorizing, and finally giving your speech.
And you do this all outside of the high school?
Yes.
There's, you don't get credit for it?
No. Well, probably through PLPs and PBRs, but I can get credit for it, but no, this isn't really affiliated with the high school or any of my classes. Yes.
So, do you, you win, are there like scholarships, or what are you competing for?
Well, each level that you win at, first locals, then districts, and then states, you get a substantial amount of money, but that depends on the district you're representing. For locals, I was given $100, and I was also given another $200 for states and districts. And then, at Nationals, just walking in the door, you're given 1,500, which is incredible. And if you win, if you make it to the top three at Nationals, the top prizes are 18,000, I believe, 14,000, and 12,000, I think.
No restrictions, this isn't, you don't have to use it for education, it's just...
Well, actually, I think you do, at least the national level, you have to use it, because I wasn't given my check, I haven't been given my check yet, so I'll probably be given that after I graduate from my senior year.
Where's the competition?
Where's the?
Bless you.
Yes, it's in Indianapolis in Indiana this year, so the National is, but the state and district competitions vary in their locations every year.
And do your parents, will your parents go out with you to the Nationals?
I know her mom is.
Yeah, you're allowed to bring one parent, well, the Legion will cover your costs for one parent, but to have another parent go, that you have to pay your own way. So, usually, last year, I brought my speech coach just to help me through the process, but this year, I'm bringing my mom. Yep.
Great.
And Elise, you also just won another competition this past weekend, too, right?
Yeah, the Lions International Speak Out Competition, which its topic was harmony, dignity, and humanity, and this was a little different, because I actually got my speech in front of me, and, which was awesome, because, you know, you don't have to memorize it. But like the Legion, I'm not sure if I said this, it's timed for the Legion, the big speech, it's from eight to 10 minutes, and they hold up a card that says you're at eight minutes, or you're at nine minutes, or you're at 10 minutes. So, you have to get it in that timeframe between eight and 10 minutes. If you go over, there's penalty points, and the same with the smaller, you have to get it between three and five minutes. But the Lions, I think it's from seven to eight, or six to eight minutes, and they don't tell you your time, so that's one of the drawbacks of Lions.
What, clearly, you've done really well at this. What got you into it? Why'd you start competing?
Actually, I heard a lot of my friends were doing speech competitions with Ms. Step, so I approached Ms. Step, and I was like, hey, I really want, I'm really interested in this, can you start me off with something easy? And this was, oh, yeah, tried the Legion Oratorical. This was my first speech competition, I had no idea it was the hardest.
Wow.
She challenged you.
Yes, she did, yes.
And you excelled.
And you just talked around my comment, but you won the state competition for the Lions this past weekend as well, right?
Yes, I did.
So, I just wanna make sure everybody else knew that.
What grade are you in, Elise?
I'm an 11th grader.
You're an 11th grader. And what is your, what is your plan? What is your career path? I'm sitting here looking at you thinking, boy, this is a budding lawyer. What are you interested in?
Most people think that, and I am really interested in law, but I actually wanna go into aerospace engineering, which I know is a completely different field of study, but I wanna work for NASA, so I'm going to go into aerospace engineering.
So, Elise, I'm gonna reach back to even before I got here, because you were a legend already. You were among the cohort of the first capstone presentations, and Elise's was on Apollo 13, is that true?
Oh, really?
And she really took it to the next level and set the bar pretty high, but it was something we realized students that age could actually do. And I wasn't even here yet, and I knew about this, so.
Well, Elise, thank you so much. We're so proud of you, and you did a fabulous job.
Yeah, for having you.
Nice job, hon. Good job.
That was awesome. Really, super awesome. Reports to the board. You're all by yourself.
All by myself this week. Emily just came down with a sickness, and Josh is at baseball, baseball practice, I'm pretty sure. Who knows with him? So, to start off with that, spring sports will start on March 22nd. I think they're doing open gyms right now, just kind of preparing themselves. Three of our wrestlers this season will be headed to Nationals in two weeks, which is really exciting. Those three are all placed in the top 10 of their divisions, so they get to go on and represent Vermont, and then there's open gyms, it's baseball and lacrosse that have started, as well as, I'm pretty sure softball has. For academics, the third quarter closes on March 31st, so we're all kind of preparing and talking about midterms so far. Junior girls who are applying to Girl State have their interviews tomorrow, applications were due last week. For those of you who don't know what Girl State and Boy State are, it's a week-long mock government program sponsored by the American Legion. It happens right at the end of the school year, and you kinda go and you immerse yourself in government for the week. It sounds like a cool opportunity.
Emily did it last year, I think.
Yeah, Emily, Josie Johnson. Josh did it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be not able to, I won't be in the country, so ending the, ending the streak. Personalized learning plans are coming up on being due. We had a half-day last Thursday to just work on them and try to finalize them. And quarter three for seniors also marks the cutoff for determining the valedictorian and soliditorian, all of that for the class of 2016. For music, high school has a concert tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. And districts, the regional music festival for band and chorus just finished up a few weeks ago. I'm not the best person to talk about senior class news, but Emily wanted me to say, or to make sure to point out that seniors have written letters to over 75 local businesses asking for donations for Project Grad, and they will be hand-delivering thank-you notes for all of them within the next few weeks. With that, Project Grad, Project Grad is all planned out, they're going to be moving around the Burlington area, they're thinking about Skate Land, Get Air, Trampoline Park, and The Edge. Emily says that next time the board meets, they'll have a finalized plan to share with you guys. And for the junior class, we're starting preparations for Prom 2016. Currently, we have a Yankee Candle fundraiser, so if any of you are interested, come talk to me. And that's about it for, for the students right now.
Awesome. Thanks, thank you.
So, there's like one amendment there, there's actually a middle school band and chorus concert tomorrow night, and high school on Wednesday night.
On Wednesday, yeah.
I think that's...
Oh, yeah, I thought tonight was Tuesday. My bad.
I was a little confused myself. Thank you, thank you. I wanted to add also, and I hope the board will join me, in congratulating Brandon Kuzno, got first place at 182 in the wrestling tournament. That's pretty amazing. We had Jeb Hodgson.
Hodgson.
Hodgson. He had his, he was our number four with 100, is that right? He's had, we've had four wrestlers with over 100 wins?
This season, yes.
Right, and that's Ryan Paquin and Ethan Reardon, are those the other two?
And Brandon.
And Brandon, yeah.
Oh, no, we didn't do it yet.
Pretty amazing. And I wanted to wish them luck in the, in the New England's.
Well, so they already went to New England.
Oh, they did?
That's where they qualified for the National.
Yeah.
Ah.
So, who are the three that are going to Nationals? Brandon Kuzno.
Ethan Reardon, no, Jeb Hodgson, and Ryan Paquin.
Nice.
I'd also like to recognize the middle school math counts team, which came in third in the States.
Absolutely, yeah.
Which was pretty cool.
Wow.
And Kai Williams. And my son came in third in the States, too. So, it's pretty cool.
A great picture of him on the Facebook page.
Oh, nice.
Awesome. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent sent us her report. Is there anything you want to say on it?
No, but I did wanna emphasize that we, straight out of the gate, are having a very successful attempt at providing our students with food in the afternoon. And since she's here, I'd like to recognize Martha Kenfield, who's really been the, not just the spearhead, but the true cheerleader for getting this program up and started. As you read in my report, this is a federally funded opportunity for our students. We're actually serving over 60 students a day after school Friday. It kind of levels off a little bit, but it has been widely successful, so much so that we're going to be expanding to the elementary school around the April vacation.
Yes, we're waiting for, the state has to come and do a final visit for final approval, and so we're expecting that this week or next. And then, once they've done that, then we'll be talking about when we're starting up the elementary school. So, any student, any child in our district from the age of one year and one day old through graduating seniors may come and partake in a free dinner. It starts at 2:46, and it goes to about 3:20 in the afternoon.
Every day?
Every day.
Wow.
Every day that there's school.
Every day there's school, yeah.
Right.
That's here. And the beauty of it is, is that were there to be a situation, because we have this program in place now, were there to be a situation like the ice store where schools closed for a week, we would be able to open up the kitchen and offer food to children in those situations, so that they would continue to be fed when we're not having school due to that type of situation.
Not just 'cause it's closed, but because it's closed for...
Right, but because you've got an emergency travel situation, you would be able to start, start working other means in order to... you would be able to start, start working other means in order to continue to feed the kids.
And I was reading one of the many weekly newsletters that I get. I still don't understand why there's so many of them, but.
I can explain that to you later if you want. We can remedy that if you like.
Well, that's kind of what I do.
Yeah.
But anyway, um, I saw where it was published that we have, um, we have scheduled this so that the kids can grab this meal before they get on the bus.
That is correct. That is why it base, officially it starts at 2:46, because the bell rings at 2:45. And so the kids literally leave their rooms, come through. Um, we actually have a number of kids that are coming through, grabbing the meal, walking this way back out and around to their buses. A lot of kids are actually consuming most of the food before they get on the bus.
That's why we call it grab and go.
So, and there's many offerings, um, every day.
Martha, is it going to be available during big school vacations, too, in the summer? Or is it just during?
It is not a program that they currently are suggesting being offered during the summer. We will have a summer food program running.
Yeah.
But the requirement there is that you're only allowed to offer two meals. And so currently, we offer breakfast and lunch. And we have an open-site feeding that will be, um, based at the Virgin Union Elementary School like it has been in the past.
What's the long-term funding for this?
Uh, that's the beauty of it, is that, um, every month we'll put in the information into the computer. Um, the federal government will reimburse us for each meal that's served.
And the reimbursement rate for dinner is significantly higher than it is for either breakfast or lunch right now.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that's because of a grant that the federal government has that is enabling them to do that.
Is it, is it an annual grant, or is it like a five-year grant? Do you know?
It is part of the Child Authorization Act of 2010 that started the programs up.
But it, it remains in place until reauthorization, and we anticipate that it will continue. Vermont still has a very high percentage of children, um, who qualify for free meals. And our hunger, our, our issues around, um, really feeding children that in need is, is very significant.
Yes.
And what I like about this program is it removes the stigmatism. So if, you know, a big basketball player, you know, big brawny basketball player goes in and eats, then, then the stigma of going in to get a free meal is put away because all kids are going in there. It's really, really a fabulous opportunity.
And actually, that's what's so cool. Uh, the first two weeks, I was over here every afternoon. And, um, you, you guys all remember being in high school, and what it's to be the cool kids that are going in, and the seniors. Well, the cool wrestling seniors, while they were practicing for regionals, they came in several days and then sat down and ate. So now it's okay to come in and get food. And the kids can't believe that it's free, that it's an option. Um, I, um, it's very cool to see them come in and get their food. And we have regulars who are coming every day. We have some who show up and we haven't seen again. So, but there's another wide school population that's not taking advantage. So there's more kids that can take advantage, and we have over 1,000 kids in the district that could be taking advantage, so. And that's gone out in newsletters, um, this past week to, um, remind them of that.
Is, there some provision to make sure that nobody misses their bus because of doing this?
Yeah.
I just have one last question. Isn't it based on our free and reduced population?
It is based on the free and reduced population.
So if we qualify at 50%, then we don't?
No, the, they thought of that, this, this is a smart thing that the federal government did, is that once you get a program like this running, because it's recognized that hopefully by seeing the benefits of it, more people will fill out the applications to be enrolled if they're eligible.
Yeah.
You're eligible for five years. So in that, and, um, one of the things is, is that, uh, what I've seen in the past, and I'm, I'm not positive about this particular program, but I'll be checking on it, is that at any point in time when you hit the 50 mark again, then it keeps you eligible for another, you know, like it just keeps rolling from every time you're hitting that spot.
So it's good for at least five years, then, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, some of the kids were shocked. They thought we were offering it for a week and it was done. For going.
Little teaser. And we actually qualify because of Virgin Union Elementary School's numbers. Is actually why the high school qualifies.
By location.
Thanks a lot, Martha. That's awesome. Anything else for the superintendent? Oh, audits.
So the update on the audit is, um, is this. I believe we, do we have a draft? Did it come in tonight, the draft of the ANW?
No.
It did not.
No.
So we're waiting for the draft of the, I, I got, I got an email this morning that one was sent, and I have not been able to find it in my list of emails, so there's a little confusion about that. Tomorrow is the deadline. We really need to get it in in order to be able to get our federal funds. Um, I have been in contact with the Agency of Education. They're aware of the dilemma that we're in. They've asked me to, to hang on to the documentation that we have. I still am holding out hope that we will have our single audit submitted by tomorrow so we can stay within compliance, but that has not happened as of yet. And I'm looking at my email, and it has not come in.
And then what happens if it goes by and we're not in compliance?
I'm hoping that the agency is going to work with me and understand the situation. We have draft, we have draft reports. So it's not like we have nothing.
Yeah.
We're just going through some last-minute, um, communications about that.
Okay.
So we do have a draft of the?
We don't have a draft of ANW. We only have of the school audits.
And the audit that is due to the A&amp;E is the Addison Northwest Supervisory Grants?
Because of the grants that we, that we take in.
It's the single audit is due tomorrow. And then all of the rest of the audits are due to the state by the 31st of this month. So single audit is different than? Single audit is federal. And, and do they use the audited financial statements for that? The sing, yes, the audited grant financials, yes.
Is this sweet?
So are you going to drive down there tomorrow?
Yep.
Where are they?
In Rutland.
Oh, that's not far.
And, and I want to say out loud in public that I would, um, really like the administration to file a formal complaint with the accountancy board, the Board of Accountancy.
Actually, I was going to bring that to the ANW board, Laurie, because the board hires the auditing firm. I believe that that should come from the board. But we get, we're going to put that on the agenda for the end of March.
Great.
Great.
Joanne, do you think there's any reason the final reports won't be ready by the 31st?
No, I don't. I mean, we, we're just, we're really squeaking that close.
I'm just curious.
Right.
Is that when they're due, the 31st? I mean, to the agency, okay.
Anything else? That's it for me. Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Principal, Stephanie.
Any questions on my report?
You know, I, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, is there any question? The, so when you guys first came, um, you guys meaning the two of you? No, you were already here. When you became the principal.
I'm actually the most senior administrator in the district now, after the retirement of the two elementary school principals, yeah.
Wow.
Didn't take long to rise to the top.
It's because you're so good. That's awesome. So, um, we talked about evaluations, teacher evaluations, and, and the professional development, development update just reminded me of that. I don't know if now is a good time to talk about that, or should we talk about that at another board meeting?
I would like to, if the board has questions about that, it would be good for us to put it on as an agenda item. And just let me know what the, what the content is, and Stephanie and I will put something together.
I, I think I've given you an update on how many teachers we, that are under supervision evaluation this year. I don't have those numbers right now. I could, you know, ballpark it. But I'd be happy to give you a, a more complete report and talk about the, the PD that we've done at the administrative level. Some future meeting?
Yeah, do you, I'd be very curious if you don't mind putting that in the report.
Sure.
Maybe for next time. That'd be great. Any other questions, or do you have anything else, Stephanie?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Business manager, monthly expenditure report. Hi, Tonia.
Hi. Any questions?
I had a question. I had a couple of questions, actually. Does anybody else have any questions before I go run my mouth? You guys, okay. So, um, transportation costs. We have 15,000, almost $16,000 worth of transportation cost, but I thought all the transportation was in the supervisory union. I'm wondering why we have a line item.
Only the to and from school is in the SU.
Oh.
Um, the field trips and sports and stuff is in, still in the local budget.
Now, I know field trips in general are in general instruction, no?
The field trip costs.
Yes.
Not the transportation.
Oh.
There's a cost for a field trip, and then there's the transportation to a field trip.
Oh, that's in addition to the field trip cost?
Yes.
And that's not extracurricular?
No.
And so how did we miss it with the budget creation?
Um, well, it, um, it's probably budgeted. The transportation for extracurriculars is budgeted in the extracurriculars. But getting clarification from the state, I, I do have to move that to the transportation line.
But you just, so?
So the budget for the transportation.
Is in line two.
Is in line two, but the expenses are in the transportation 2,700 lines.
Okay.
Clarification?
Yes, please.
When you sign a contract for busing for the district, it includes all of this, correct?
It includes, I have not signed the, I mean, that was signed before I got here. My understanding is that they give us, because we don't know from year to year how much we're going to use an extracurricular, they give us a rate for that.
Yep.
And then we budget for it.
It's an hourly rate.
Yeah, it's an hourly rate, uh, but they, they, they also give us a root rate, which is the to and from.
Okay. So the, the money comes out of the, out of your budget as opposed to Stephanie's budget?
For the to and from only.
Yeah, only. And the vocational. Because that's all that the state requires consolidation of, is the to and from.
If you'll remember, there's a, there's a line item for Walden Transportation. There's a line item for CBL Transportation. There's a line item for middle school field trip transportation. There's a line item for PE Transportation, Guidance Transportation. All of those places, uh, it may be under field trips, but it is essentially budgeting the cost of a bus to take a group of students up to somewhere. So there's a lot of it in the 1,100 section, general instruction. But the expense comes out of transportation.
And I don't mean to be picky. I understand that you have a budget, that your budget figure to date is good at the bottom. But I noticed an awful lot of entries for Social Security that are in the negative. Is there some, is there some basic reason for that? It, it appears to be across all departments.
Um, well, if the salaries are not at zero, then if, if the salaries are over because people move, um, columns and stuff, or the new hires came in higher than what we expected, or some came in higher, some came in lower, then the, um, Social Security would be different.
But I didn't, I didn't notice that the, that the salaries were, were low, you know, over in the amount that the, the Social Security. It, just, just for, for an example, 1105 Language Arts. Your, your salaries, everything encumbered, you come out at a minus .01%. But you're 14.11% lower than your Social Security. And it just didn't seem to tie together to me. If the salaries had been over budget, well, I can see Social Security over budget. And it, it seemed that, that there was, that and health insurance kind of bounces along in the same venue.
Um, I would have to look at specific lines, but, um, I can tell you, like for world language under the health insurance, we, I budgeted for a certain amount, and the new hire, world language was a new hire, right?
No.
No, no.
But. Or they made.
Language Arts was?
Language Arts was a new hire, so that would be, um, I budget for, you know, a certain, either a one person or a two person, somewhere in the middle. And they could come in at a family.
I see.
Also, I'll let you know that with the, um, health insurance pieces, at the end of the year, we do a reconciliation because all of the employee shares are sitting in a reserve account, and they have to be applied back to these expenditures.
Okay.
So they may look over now, but at the end of the year, they will.
Well, I, I can see your, your budget's in the black at the current point. I, I acknowledge that. It's just that, that seemed to be an arbitration in there with those two accounts.
Um, I'm going to keep going. So, uh, operations and maintenance is, I mean, it appears we're overspent by 70,000 in that line item, and I'm wondering if the reason that is is because of the insurance claims revenue? I mean, we've, we've incurred those expenditures.
Because of the steam damage.
Of course, of course.
And the revenue is in a line item in the revenue under insurance claim.
So that, but that's my question, is that 70,000 overage is related mostly to the insurance?
Yes.
Expenditures?
Yes.
And it's actually covered?
Yes, I see that, right.
Yes.
Um, because the insurance claims is 167, just like, let's get it on the table here. And, um, the operations and maintenance overage is 70, so we are in good shape there.
You're okay.
Then, um, so on the Student Support Services, the 2,100. Um, we're right, we're right there. I, I, I don't even, I'm not sure what Student Support Services is.
Well, it's, would be the Guidance and the Health Services.
Okay, alright.
And Speech and Language, but we don't have any of that being spent right now.
Okay. And are we expecting any more of an overage on that, spending overage?
I'm sorry?
Are we expecting an, any more spending overage on that?
It's, for the most part, it was salaries and benefits that were, and the increase in the.
So there's an increase in the secretary there, but remember, there's a decrease in the principal's secretary because she resigned this year. So it's just in a, it's budgeted in a different category. It's in the principal's office.
Um, and then the last question was, um, I had emailed you guys and asked you, we, if you look at last times, and this is just, let me, let me back up. When I compare last period to this period, if there's a big variance, I mean, I really couldn't care less whether there's a big variance or not, as long as it makes sense that there's a big variance, right? That's why I asked for the analysis. Like, um, we went from a cumulative, um, deficit, or a estimated cumulative fund best deficit of 61,000, um, in our February report, and now we're up to 138. And I'm just wondering why.
Down from 599.
Oh, of course. I, I, I get it. I get it. I'm, I'm not, but I, I'm, but it's, it's concerning that we have one, one financial report, one month, and it swings so significantly in the next month. Just, it just makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah, it, it's, it's the expenses and the encumbrances that are going to make it swing. I mean.
Yes, but what particularly changed between February and March to drive a $100,000 difference? Or 60, $76,000 difference?
Expenses, I mean, paying bills.
Which ones is what I'm asking. That's why I asked for a, I asked for a specific analysis.
Okay, we, we were not understanding the question, and now I understand what your question is, Laurie. So we, um, this goes back to, um, in previous meetings where we said that we would try to put a summary together if things look markedly different. Um, and we will go back and think about how to do that. But, um, I, I didn't understand that that was the individual question.
I didn't know that you wanted specific details of.
So when we analyze this report before it goes to the board, and we see the swings, we will have a summary report available so that you understand ahead of time what, what that's all about.
So maybe we'll have that for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Tonia. Thank you, Joanne. You're welcome. So I'm gonna let Tonia head out at this point because she has submitted her report. I hope that's all right with the board. Thanks, Tonia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You could probably do that most of the time, Tonia.
Yeah.
I mean, you live a long ways away.
Right.
Stay off those dirt roads, will you?
Yeah, there's some serious mud on your truck.
It's only a half a mile long, too. But the ruts are this deep.
All right. Facility committee update, we don't have one of those, or do we?
No.
I have nothing to report.
You mean it, Tom?
I like that. That was good.
Nice.
You're good, I like that.
That was good.
I have nothing to report. You don't have anybody?
One thing I was, I, when I went back and looked at, I was trying to pull together the facility committee and, and its origin, and also the finance committee, and I was going back through minutes, and I came across some minutes that said that the operations and maintenance plan was going to be shared with the board.
Yep.
And I didn't see it in the Google Docs.
I, I sent them out, I think, well, I think the October 1st is the deadline for reporting that, so I would've done that last October, but I can reshare it with you.
It's probably on the-
Why, it wouldn't be in there.
One is a, one is a Word doc, and then one is a spreadsheet.
So if you go on, I mean, obviously Glory would post that with the minutes.
No, it's the, it's the-
Fortunately.
It's the whole plan.
It's the working document that we keep, we maintain.
In Google Docs.
Well, it's not really, it's a Word doc, it's the state report.
Oh, the template that I gave you.
The template, yeah.
Okay. So would you share that with the whole board, please, Steph?
I will, sure.
Thank you.
You can do it right now.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. I did notice that we've, we paid the expense for the repair of the door.
The door.
The door. On the turret.
Yes, we, well, we repaired the door, then it broke again, and then we repaired it again. And now we have bollards to protect the door from opening too wide.
Except that there's damage to the door from hitting the bollards.
Well, we, we're waiting on a rubber membrane bumper that was supposed to be installed at the same time. The company knows that they will be liable for any damage to the door in the meantime while we're waiting on the bumper, so we've had that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
The door has flung open at different times, and the bollard has stopped it, and you were then able to close the door afterwards.
Wow.
And it locked.
Yes.
So it, it did work, which is the good news.
You're really lucky without a bumper that it didn't break the glass, especially in the bottom.
Well, it-
Anyway.
It hits the metal, not the glass, but just barely.
Well, thank you. That's awesome. Hannaford Career Center, we don't have a board member?
Nope.
And unless anybody else has something about the Hannaford Career Center? Finance Committee?
You talked about all of it. The only thing is the bills down near under action items, right?
Okay. And we can talk about whether we're gonna continue, maybe? I mean, that was one of the things that I was thinking about. Anyway, there is a couple of things. We did review the bills. There, the repair for the door, there were some insurance repairs for the steam, maybe? There was some, oh, the library and the principal's office got five thousand dollars worth of shades. That's really great, right? I mean, this is crazy in here when the sun is coming down. That's-
Yeah, these are solar shades, and the shades in the main office and the principal's and assistant principal's office are just shades. We're also replacing some of the others. If you'll remember, when we did our lockdown, we don't, we weren't able to secure the areas because we didn't, weren't able to pull shades down in those areas. So that was in, I mean, it will make this room more comfortable. They put film on the top windows there, but most importantly, it allows us to use this as a, a secure space if there's a threat from outside.
I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Well, it certainly makes it more secure if you block the view, but it's still a glass window.
Well, yeah.
Wouldn't advise it as your primary.
Well, every room then, George, would have the same issue.
But if there were, if there were a threat that was outside the building, then hopefully you would know on what side and be able to move people away from that side of the building.
We would hope.
Hopefully.
It's, it's, I know it's a very tough issue. It's one that can be resolved, but it takes a lot of dollars, and we obviously don't have them. I, believe me, I understand security. I, I install locks every day on the basis of that need, but it's, it costs a lot of money.
I realize I had one other question for you, Stephanie. There was, in one of the newsletters that came out a couple of weeks ago, there was a talk about the people parking in the handicap parking slot, their spaces. How's that going?
Did you see the thousand dollars we spent on cones to Blue Tarp?
Afraid I didn't see that. Oh, that, oh, that was in Blue Tarp, wasn't it?
Well, it was part of it. Yeah, we, I mean, we, we got some feedback from our first responders in the area. There were a couple of big events here where people were parked in areas that they weren't supposed to be parked in. Some of them were rescue people, coincidentally, who felt that, that that would allow them easy access if they got called away, but they were blocking exits. So it, it's kind of a, a miscommunication, but we, we're, when we have those events, we're going to be very proactive in putting the cones out to make sure that people do not park in the fire lanes. And we, we're gonna put, do some signage and do some remind, we did the E News reminders, and we have an agreement for the police to sort of, you know, you, you wanna take a softer approach first. You don't, you don't wanna ticket someone who's visiting an event, who's in, at an event here.
I agree.
So I prefer to communicate this very, very well before we have to resort to that.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Now, I was, I came one day and there was someone parked in the handicap parking out to the side, and they did not have a handicaps ticker. I assumed that that in part was what was happening here, but that-
No, that's, that's not what it was in, in reference to. That was a, that happened to be a faculty member who was having some issues and needed to be closer to the building, so.
Okay, thank you.
I can relate that when I worked at the hospital, we would get complaints about the handicap spaces being occupied by people without handicap plates. And every single time that we got that complaint and were able to follow up on it, they maybe didn't have the handicap plate, but they had the decal, it was laying on the dash.
Oh.
So it couldn't be seen by this person that was driving by. It-
So they're mostly compliant, they just might not have the-
People are pretty compliant with those.
Okay. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to Michael Thomas on joining the Rowan Fellowship. I was hoping that might go in the meetings, the minutes to Glory. Thank you. And he is joining two of our amazing staff, Christine, Christina Kirkaldi and Matt DeBloy. Now, we have three Rowan Fellowship people. That's really awesome.
He's gonna do a, a presentation in May.
Yeah. He's gonna, I'm sorry?
He's gonna present his plan here in May.
Nice.
To the board.
Okay. That's great. And one last thing. Are we still in finance committee? Yes, we are. Does anybody, we don't have detailed 2017 budget because we voted on a big number. Could you put it on your to-do list to get us that, a copy of that? Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I was wondering, I know it was three hundred and something thousand dollars worth of cuts, exactly where all those cuts will be, and have you guys, have you decided that yet, or?
To a certain degree.
It'd be great to know where they all are gonna fall.
Reductions.
Thank you.
Molsi, it's the staff reductions?
No, I mean, I prefer the term reductions.
Well, I saw that, but is it that three hundred, is it this?
No.
Okay, that's what I, I'd be curious to know.
So-
I'm assuming there's no way around this.
We can talk about that if you want.
Not tonight, though. So we, we will give the board a report of the staff, what changes we made to the budget next time, and provide detail to what was adopted in a detailed budget.
That'd be great, thank you.
Perfect.
All right. I'm feeling that we've got a time issue, and I, I feel like the discussion about the finance committee may mean belongs on the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Board. Kind of related to the audit committee. It started out as an audit committee, but we were working on policy and other financial matters, so. Because I feel like it's, that we, we have a bigger picture fish to fry as opposed to the smaller picture, which I, you know, I think we've learned a lot, but- So when, at the A and W meeting on the 23rd, I'll have subcommittees as an agenda item. We can talk about it then. All right, thank you. Board members, anybody have anything to say? Other than me? Okay. Thank you. Onto action items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Darn, Neil isn't here.
I know. He is, he is.
Fine-tuned cone, we need that.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of bills and directors' orders. I will entertain a motion.
Move that we approve bills and directors' orders in the amount of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Policy, second reading. E three.
An adoption.
E thirteen, E fourteen. Do we have to have a motion?
We do.
I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the policies, E three, E thirteen, and E fourteen as written.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know you're behind.
Sorry, I read them.
Appreciate that. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed?
I think we adjourn, but for the executive session, unless anybody has any others, business.
You're gonna give the spiel?
The spiel.
Yeah, we have to have the spiel.
Need a motion.
We need a motion to go into executive session.
And then the clerk will record the time that you adjourn after you get out.
Right, and then you'll email Glory.
Right.
That's your, that's your name.
Oh, so presumably I need to take notes, too.
No notes during executive session.
Excellent.
So all you need to do is send me the time that you go in, come out, and if there's any action taken from your executive session.
Got it. Thank you for the reminder of what I volunteered to do.
See how, see how easy this job is? It's excellent.
So is there a motion?
And the pay is so, yeah, right.
So, do I have a motion to go into executive session, executive session, and what language? For the purposes of the superintendent evaluation, because premature public knowledge would leave the board at a significant disadvantage.
I so moved.
Second? Tom, second? All those in favor? Any discussion?
I would suggest that we invite the superintendent.
Um, no, no.
No, this is, this is not her.
This is us.
This is just us.
She's gonna get her share.
I, I would then, whoa!
And that's a good thing, because it's a really nice share.
I would, I would then suggest that-
So glad that's all telling me right now.
I would then suggest that we adjourn to the guidance office so that the gentleman with the camera can tear this apart.
I can let you in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five. We're out. Thank you.